Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, November 15th. We do not have all our members here. Joe Ingraffia will be out. He may come in later. And we do have Bill Roshan hopefully here via Zoom. Bill, are you connected with us? A G P. We are hopefully having Bill Roshan Zoom in with us for this meeting, so if you could check in, make sure that he's available and connected. Appreciate it. Otherwise, we do have a quorum, so the meeting is called to order. We will start-
Any luck, Susan? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Bill. You're here. So, Bill is out there in the Ethernet. Welcome. So, we will start with a moment of silence. Thank you. And next up is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Any Planning Commissioner announcements? Nothing yet? Bill, did you have any announcements?
No, I'm good, Susan. Thank you.
All right. The one thing I wanted to mention, just for the general public, is the caroling cops are going to be back in early December. Sometimes folks who are new to the area and don't know about it hear the sirens in the neighborhoods and wonder what's going on. It's our Neighborhood Watch and Morro Bay Police and Fire Department who go through the community with Christmas carols and lights flashing and hand out toys and stuff to kids, and it's really fun. So, that'll be Monday, December 5th in North Morro Bay, Tuesday, December 6th in Central Morro Bay, and Wednesday, December 7th in South Morro Bay. And I think the city website may have more information on that. Fun event. All right. So, we'll open public comment. This is for items which are not on the agenda, which you can't stay for or would rather address now. See Mr. Sean Green. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Planning Commission. I'm Sean Green from here in Morro Bay. One thing I want to bring up and praise city staff for recently, this is not necessarily just to do with something with Planning Commission, but planning in general. The Coleman Park renovation is a project that the city has taken a long-term approach on, which I really appreciate as an active citizen. It's a big endeavor. We have a big stretch of meaningful land right there along the waterfront, and there's been lots of public outreach, public events, public engagement. We're at a stage where there's schematics that people have been able to see, whether it's at Public Works meetings or city council level. And I just really think the city appreciates that methodical approach to planning that sometimes we do as a city and sometimes we don't. Part of the reason I bring that up is that I received a 500-foot notice for an upcoming project here in Morro Bay that I am supportive of. However, I'm still considering an appeal of the project simply because only people within 500 feet are aware that it is happening. And I think in the name of transparency and getting more people engaged in the process that this would benefit the entire city and community if we have a Planning Commission hearing. The item is considered a minor modification of a minor use permit at the Maritime Museum. I'm a Harbor Advisory Board member. I very much support the Maritime Museum in all of their efforts. They've done so much with so little to this point. The project that is moving forward at the administrative level without a Planning Commission hearing is what I would consider a significant expansion of the project on public land. And I believe they're paying a dollar a year or some sort of subsidized lease because that's considered a public benefit, which again, I support. But I do think that having a more long-term approach to that expansion would benefit the entire community, and I'm hopeful that Planning Commission is supportive. At today's meeting, you have a project, a very interesting, useful project development down by Tidlins Park. And as part of that project, there's a really valuable historical preservation component where a beautiful building is likely to get saved, and that is likely, hopefully, if all things pan out correctly, to fall in the hands of the Morro Bay Historical Society, perhaps in the same vicinity as the Maritime Museum expansion. Those things combined, as well as additional accessory structures that are intended to go in, in the Triangle Lot vicinity, it's significant enough of a project that I would be very supportive of a Planning Commission-level hearing for that item. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Green. Anybody else for general public comment? We will close public comment then and move on to our consent calendar. We have the current and advanced planning processing list, and it looks like one, two, three, four, five minutes to approve. Looks like we're getting caught up. Anybody want to pull one of these items?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't have a problem approving all of them except on the June 21st. I'd like to abstain because I was absent from that meeting.
Okay.
So, I'd like to abstain for that, but I would approve the rest of them.
Okay.
I can second that.
All right.
Do we need to separately?
I don't. I think we can do it all together.
So, yeah, you would basically pull that, set it aside, make a motion, and second for the other one. All in favor, say aye. And then for the last one, separate vote, and Commissioner Robert, you guys would abstain.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve A1 through A5. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill?
Aye.
There you go. And none opposed. So, then we will look at A6, and we will correct that. Well, it was just that you're abstaining from that vote.
That's all.
Okay. Fine. Then we will-
Motion second.
Thank you. I will move to approve A6 and a second.
I can second that, yes.
All in favor? Aye.
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 And we heard from Bill, so we're done with that. So, let's move on to our public hearings. And I think we're going to hear from Ms. Jason.
Oh, what's this? Is that a pointer?
Yeah, I guess maybe it's both. Hold on. There you go. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and people in the audience. Tonight's item is the project location is 101 Fig Street. It is a request for coastal development permit, conditional use permit, and a variance permit approval for the, for a new single-family home. It involves relocation of what is known locally as the Little Red House, an existing single-family home that's shown here in the image on the screen, located adjacent to Tidlins Park. It would be new construction of an approximate 1,600-square-foot single-family home with 465-square-foot garage. And the variance request is to reduce the front setback from 20 feet to 10 feet. Here on the slide is the couple of images that show the site location. The upper right-hand corner of the screen shows an aerial image with the property boundaries outlined in red. And then the bottom-left image is a view from Tidlins Parking Lot, which is at the southern Embarcadero area. And this is looking northeast. The property is a small property. It's approximately 3,600 square feet, and the property line stops at the Cypress Tree, which is proposed to be, proposed to remain. It's not part of the property. The property line stops just under the canopy, but the tree is on the neighbor's property to the east. The property is located in the R2 PD Overlay Zoning District. R2, and then Plan Development Overlay is an overlay zone in our current zoning code, which allows special consideration of unique site conditions and allows reductions in development standards to result in a better project. The variance part of this project, I'll discuss in a subsequent slide. The project requires a coastal development permit by Planning Commission because it is located in the coastal appeals jurisdiction. The Plan Development Overlay is the mechanism that requires conditional use permit approval by Planning Commission. And then, of course, variances also require approval by Planning Commission, subject to finding that the request for a variance is not a special privilege, that special circumstances exist with the property, and that the variance can be found consistent with the general plan and the local coastal program. The land use for the property is medium-density residential. And so, here is a bulleted list of the proposed development. The proposal includes removal and relocation of the existing Little Red House, which is to be repurposed by the Historical Society of Morro Bay, who has expressed interest in reusing the structure as a future visitor center. They are currently involved in efforts for fundraising. The Little Red Home would be located or relocated to the area where the city-owned Triangle Lot is, near the Maritime Museum. There's no application yet filed for that location, so that would be a separate location. But staff's disclosing what the plans are for the Little Red House because in lieu of the, you know, traditional demolition reconstruction that you might see for new homes in this situation, they are seeking to preserve the home and not demolish it, but are donating it to the Historical Society for its reuse. The existing development on the property includes the existing home. There's also a tool shed and deck stairs, and then an existing four-foot-high retaining wall. The retaining wall for the proposed home would be located in the same location as the existing home. And this property, I forgot to mention this in this previous slide, but the property is also located in what we would consider a bluff development area, and I'll talk about that in a subsequent slide. That is also the mechanism that requires the conditional use permit. As part of the relocation of, excuse me, as part of the project, the existing home that's located there and the retaining wall that's located that's supporting the existing home, the proposed project would be sited in approximately the same location with a retaining wall supporting the new home. The bluff development standards really, hold on a second here. The bluff development standards are standards in the city zoning code that really speak to minimizing alteration of natural landforms and preserving the bluff character. That variance request is to reduce the required 20-foot setback to a 10-foot setback, and that would include, of course, the garage setback requirement, which would otherwise be 20 feet for the driveway as well, in order to minimize alteration of natural landforms consistent with those bluff standards due to the property's site constraints and its bluff location. Here's a site plan image that shows the existing development, and you can see the footprint of the Little Red Home. Let's see. I don't know if this, oh. I don't think my cursor quite works here, but, oh, okay, there we go. Okay.
Oh, it's working now.
Okay. Oh, I used that. Can I have the mouse back? There we go. All righty. This might be a little bit better here. Okay. So, here's the location of the existing residence. It shows the slope and the retaining wall, existing tool shed, and the existing driveway. The property's property line currently stops at the location of where the Cypress Tree is. So, there is no location, excuse me, there is no access from Fig Street, although it has a Fig Street address. Currently, there is no access to the property from Main Street. It does take its access from the Tidlins Parking Lot. And then here are the development standards for the project, which you can see the request for the reduction of the front yard setback, which would correspondingly include the garage as well. So, during the course of the application review by staff, initially, this project was thought to need a variance for bluff face development because the understanding that this was a coastal bluff that would be subject to those development standards found in our zoning code. And staff consulted with Coastal Commission staff in July of this year, and upon their review of the plans and the geological report, their determination was is that although this might be a coastal bluff in name, the intent, the bluff development standards would not apply here because of its location east of the Tidlins Parking Lot, and that in fact, it is really, they would consider it more of a sloped area, and that the geologic and seismic hazard standards would apply for these sloped properties. The thinking was is that initially, if it had been a bluff property where the bluff standards would apply, it would require a variance because development on bluff faces is not allowed per LCP outside of the core Embarcadero area. And the sloped lot and the size of the lot essentially stopping just past the top of the bluff at the Cypress Tree, and the requirement for what would otherwise be a 20-foot bluff buffer setback would render development impossible due to the size. And so, staff's brought forward the application to, not for variance, for the bluff face development, but variance for the front setback. And so, in order to minimize any further natural alteration of that landform, keep the development consistent with where the existing retaining wall is. And as far as other setbacks, it otherwise complies with the other development standards. Here's the proposed site plan. It shows the new residence, patio in the back, garage. There is a second-floor balcony on the front, and then the front driveway area there. The floor plan shows, the image on the right is the proposed floor plan with the bedrooms and the garage on the first floor. The second floor would be the dining room, living room, kitchen, and a bedroom. And then there is a proposed roof deck plan, which is approximately 400-square-foot roof deck. It shows the solar panels on the east side of the roof deck. The applicant has stated that due to solar requirements likely that a good portion of this roof deck would, there'd be more solar panels than what's shown here. And then that would be, of course, included on building plans. And these, this slide here shows the building elevations. The building has been designed to reflect the character that, the character of the Little Red Home with the red siding and board and bat siding, the window trim and color, the similar barn red color as the existing home, and then also the garage door and recess features. And this was part of previous commentary that the Planning Commission in 2017 gave the applicant, when at that point in time, it was thought that the property size was larger. And in the intervening years since 2017, the survey's been updated to determine that in fact, the property is much smaller than what was thought, and as I said, would render development impossible at the top of the bluff. But the one essential theme from that 2017 conceptual review meeting by Planning Commission was really a desire to kind of preserve the look of the Little Red Home and that it was an important asset to the local art community. And so, that applicant has taken that Planning Commission commentary in the design of the home that you see today. And then, as part of our planned, our application requirements, this is a proposed visual simulation. It shows the existing view in the upper-left corner contrasted with what they are proposing with their design today. And then this is just another angle here. And then, this is an image that shows the view from Main Street with the outline of the top of the building. Again, it's minimizing impacts to any views, citing the home at the base of the bluff, citing the home in the location roughly of the existing footprint of the home. As part of the application requirements, there's also a proposed landscape plan and color and materials board, which is included in your packet and in the staff report. And then, the part of the application requirements also included a historic review for the home. The report that was prepared by CRMS concluded that the existing home was an intact example of Morro Bay history and the local art community. It does not meet their criteria for state or national significance, but it is important locally. The city does not have a historic preservation ordinance, but the Historical Society has expressed interest in preserving the home and reusing it as a future visitor center. And so, that is part of the proposal today. It is an interesting example of the local artists that owned the home in the 1940s and built it then. And, and as I stated, the Historical Society is interested in taking on this home, which would save it from being demolished. As part of the resolution that's before you tonight, after the staff report was prepared, one thing that did come to staff's attention was to clarify what the future intent is for the home. Staff is recommending that, should the commission be interested, that a planning condition of approval be added to the project that would require the applicant to prepare a relocation plan that would provide for removal of the home. And these further details worked out prior to issuance of a building permit so that it's clear in the record that this isn't a demolition reconstruct, that it is actually a removal reconstruct, which we don't do those very often in terms of removing and preserving existing homes. On my final slide, I have the language for that, and that the commission can choose to decide if you'd like to go do that. For general plan, LCP consistency, as I've stated in the staff report, the land use is medium-density residential. This is a conditionally permitted use via the Plan Development Overlay. And the bluff development standards, really the purpose of that is to protect public views and minimize alteration of natural landforms. And that is, that is the goal of the project here, to preserve the character of the existing setting there. The project minimizes these alterations with the request to reduce the front setback, and it protects public views through the design of the home at the lowest portion of the parcel. The geologic report submitted by GeoSolutions documented the historic bluff in geotechnical studies. It evaluated the stability of the bluff pursuant to city requirements and pursuant to our LCP Public Safety Policy, PS 2.13, which we consulted with the Coastal Commission staff on. And a condition of approval has been added to require that these geotechnical recommendations be incorporated into the building permit and into the approval. In regards to the variance, as I stated, the applicant is requesting approval of a variance to reduce the front setback, and staff supports this request because it's consistent with the bluff development standards. It minimizes alteration of the bluff and the natural landform. It cites the proposed home with the existing retaining wall, in the location of the existing home with the existing retaining wall, excuse me, and that to otherwise comply with a full 20-foot setback would require greater excavation into the slope. And in addition, as I said, the retaining wall is in the same location as the existing. It's also consistent with the public safety policy regarding new development in high-risk areas that states that development shall ensure stability and not contribute significantly to erosion nor substantially alter natural landforms. So, Planning Commission can grant a variance when all of the following circumstances are met, and that is that this is not a special privilege. The setback variance provides for slope stability of the bluff by minimizing alteration. The applicant otherwise complies with development standards as proposed. Finding number two, that there are special circumstances that exist with the property, and these special circumstances exist, which include the site constraints related to the overall slope and topography, and the small size of the lot, which would require greater excavation otherwise. By providing and approving the variance, it then provides an adequate building footprint because to otherwise require the applicant to build at the top of bluff setback 20 feet, it would render the development virtually impossible. And then finding number three, that it's consistent with the general plan and local coastal plan. The reduction of the setback accommodates development of the lot with a single-family home, which is a current residential use, and it's consistent with the zoning and land use designation for this area. And it also meets the parking requirement, which is the two-car garage. So, staff recommends that the Planning Commission conditionally approve the project by adopting Resolution PC 09, which includes the findings and conditions of approval for the project as shown on the site plans. And then here is that language, should the Planning Commission be interested, which would revise the resolution to add planning condition number 12 that reads, "Applicant shall prepare and submit a relocation plan for review that provides for relocation of the Little Red House prior to issuance of a building permit." And so, I'll leave that on the slide, but I'm happy to answer any questions, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you for that. I need to also let you know that I am a member of the Historical Society Board, have no financial connections or gains any one way or another with that, but just to let you know. And certainly, the moving of the house is something we've talked about and the interest in preserving it if possible, so.
Yeah.
Yes, Mike?
And thanks for clarifying, Cindy, because the first question I had is how are we going to make this happen, the moving of the house? And now you've given me the condition of approval. That's what it is, right? Okay, good. So, we've got a condition of approval as part of the project or the variance. I was going to ask you, I was out there around 4:30, so I did take a video of the bluff, not just the Little Red House, but the whole bluff. So, say if another owner, as part of that bluff, wanted to come in. It doesn't sound like we would have to do a bluff variance for them either. Is that true or false? I'm just trying to get a general feel for it because I've got it on a video. I've got that in the middle, you know, and then there's a property to the left, a property to the right, which is right on that bluff. Say if they were to come in, would that require a bluff variance? I'm just-
It depends on the property circumstances. Variances are site-specific to a property.
Sure.
In this specific area, the way that the parcels are laying out, most of the properties in this area of town have frontage that extends all the way to Maine, from Maine to Tidlins. This is the only property in this, in this area, this immediate area, that does not have access to Maine.
Okay.
And so, it really is, there really are special circumstances that exist with this property.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that if we go down that road, we're consistent. So, we're going to treat this one a certain way, which is, I like it just to be upfront. But if some property owner on either side of it were to come forward, then they would be treated the same way. You know, there's consistency in how we're issuing these variances and finding these special circumstances. I just want to make sure that we know that.
Yes. That's correct. And there would have to be site-specific conditions with their property that you would independently evaluate.
That's all I really had.
Thanks, Mike. Asia? Could you tell me, do you know what the current setback is for the Little Red House as it is
I think the applicant could provide this. I believe it is approximately nine and a half feet, and Scott is looking it up right now. Is that correct?
Because I was going to say, it doesn't look like 20 feet as it is.
Yeah.
It's not dimensioned.
Yeah. So, we can ask the applicants representative when they come up, but it is not, it does not meet the current 20-foot setback. So, the home would not be, the new home would not be any further west than what the Little Red House is.
And then, I'm also curious what the square footage of the footprint is of the existing structure, if maybe the applicant can address that.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And then I'm also curious how the neighboring properties, if they are setback 20 feet, or if they are also non-conforming because they're historical or...
Those neighboring structures that you saw on the visual simulation, I don't know what the setbacks are for those. All of those properties there predate our LCP. They've been there for decades. And so I would suspect that they're non-conforming in terms of their location at the base of the bluff.
So I guess I'm wondering...
But they're not residential structures.
Okay. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, when that original setback was decided, what it was based on for that street right there? I don't know, I don't know if you can answer that, but from that original zoning, what the thinking was for that 20-foot...
So a majority of these were, right, they were developed prior to incorporation of the city?
Right.
Don't know what the theory was behind the locations, even if they're not...
No, I mean with the current zoning code that we're using as a 20-foot setback.
Yeah.
If none of them are conforming, I guess, I'm wondering.
So they predate our current zoning code, but all of these properties are, except for this 101 Fig Street, they're all very narrow, long, rectangular-shaped properties, and that's how the original subdivision map for this area of town was done decades ago. And so most of them cited the homes further east, closer to Main Street. And this, you know, predates development of the Embarcadero.
Sure.
And that bluff standard required you, you know, really the bluff standard, you're required to set back a certain amount, 20 feet, you know, bluff buffer from the top of bluff, because the idea is to preserve impacts against coastal erosion and slope stability. And in this situation, this is really a landward type bluff. There is no coastal erosion, it's not subject to marine erosion, and that was the conclusions of the geotechnical report.
All right, thanks. And then my other question is, even with the conditional use for relocation plan, we would not be making any kind of vote or decision on what the relocation plan stipulates, right? Just that there is a relocation plan, if that's part of...
That's correct, that's correct. Because in this situation, the applicant, their application request does not include a request to demolish the home. They're saying they want to move the home off-site and then construct a new home. The relocation plan would address, after the moved building permit is issued, the building permit to move the home elsewhere, what happens then? And that's really not the purview of this particular application, because it's limited to this real property area.
Right. So just wanted to be clear that we are not deciding where that structure ends up.
Right. It's just making clear that the home will be removed, yes. And they'll have to, the Historic Society, should they come forward with an application, or they will have to come forward with an application, to cite it at another location.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Asia. Mr. Rochen, do you have any questions for staff?
Bill, are you there? There you are.
I'm back. Asia and Mike asked most of my questions. I guess what I'd like to do is, again, focus on the relocation plan. Who then decides where it gets to be moved? Would that be left up to the Historic Society? Cindy, can we make sure that's part of the condition?
So Commissioner Rochen?
Yeah.
What's the desire there? I mean, so we have the condition set up, just so that it requires them to put their relocation plan together. The partner at this point that's been identified is the Historic Society.
Right. Asia questioned the location.
So the location, yeah, so that's a good question, Commissioner Rochen. Location would be determined by a future planning permit that would be issued theoretically to the Historic Society for the relocation of the home.
Well, I guess I'd want to make sure that the relocation plan was clear, that the responsibility of the relocation would go with the Historic Society then, so that we have some certainty of where it's going to be moved. Does that make sense?
I don't know that we have, I mean, representatives from the Historical Society that want to accept the condition on this project.
We do have the Chair of the Historical Society in the audience, so perhaps he could address that. You know, I think, Mr. Rochen, moving forward, there are many conditions that need to be looked at, where it would be, what the cost of that would be, what the cost of relocation would be, making all the connections. It's going to require a significant amount of fundraising on the part of the Historical Society, which is a small group. We welcome anybody who's interested in preserving some Morro Bay history to contribute to that process. So I think Mr. Silaway, who's in the audience, can address that more during public comment, but I personally am comfortable with the condition that suggests that the applicant will provide for the relocation, to provide a plan for that relocation, and that will be a process that will happen with staff.
So let's see if I can't, we can't add maybe a sentence to this that might address Commissioner Rochen's concern. We could state in the condition that the applicant work with his Morro Bay Historic Society on the relocation plan?
That's it, that's it.
Is that enough, Commissioner Rochen?
Yes, that sounds good to me.
Okay, so let's, we'll add that sentence to the condition.
I just wanted to tell Bill he didn't see me, but I was putting my thumb up. So, great, Bill, great.
Yeah, okay.
If I could, this is not discussion time though, right?
Questions, we're still having questions.
We'll have some discussion following. All right. We will now open for public comment. I think we will have the applicant or his agent first. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, just let's, yeah, get this off of here. And get this up. Slideshow from the beginning. You should be able to check it now, you can just go hit the button and see if it goes forward or back. It's tied to this, so you want to point it this way, not at the screen. Sorry.
Okay, right. Thanks, Scott. Good evening, Chairman Stewart, members of the commission. I'm Chuck Stevenson, here tonight representing the owners, the owner, Steve Morgan, who I believe is zoomed in on the meeting. Also in the audience, as we mentioned, Glenn Silaway is here, will have some remarks a little later on. So this property has a very interesting history. You've, I'm sure, read the Historic Building Report, which is a pretty fascinating story about Nadine Richards and the history of this house and how it came to be. The Morgans have owned this property for 29 years. They've lived in it part-time, but they have also taken great interest in preserving the building as it was really when Nadine Richards owned it. When I first was introduced to them and came into the house and saw it, it was like a time capsule. It was amazing to see this little pristine little jam of a cabin that was kept virtually the same way, with just very few upgrades for safety. So I just wanted to sort of give credit to the Morgans for really seeing the value and the historic importance of this building, even before it had historic designation locally. They have an interest in donating the building to the Historical Society for a component to a visitor-serving project, yet to be exactly figured out. But there's a great deal of interest from the Morro Bay Historical Society and from the Morgans in working with them to get this, to get the building to them. Also, the Morgans were very interested, as was the prior Planning Commission, in sort of respecting the building character and some elements of the design in the new building. The Morgans have always wanted to have a board-and-bat-sided newer home with a metal roof, with the same sort of finestration, sort of generally the same feel as the Little Red House was. That's been their vision for a new home. But they wanted to have an opportunity to have more members of their family able to enjoy the house when they come out. It's very small. Commissioner King, your question earlier was about what size is the house? It's about probably just under 500 square feet, the upper floor and the lower floor As far as setbacks are concerned, I believe it's probably 10, 11 feet back from the property line. So I'm going to try this now. So the project description is pretty straightforward and simple. It's to construct a new single-family residence and to relocate the Little Red House. The approvals being requested are a conditional use permit, coastal development permit, variance, and authorization to relocate the building. Cindy did a really excellent job, a thorough job, in going through all the details of the staff report. I'll try to move a little quicker through this so we can get to discussion, but just to point out a few little details that the house is really in the Tidylands Marina parking lot. It's not in a traditional street situation. The flow of traffic going past the Little Red House is more one-way going out, and there's about 45 feet of space between the current property line and the nearest parking space. So we didn't really see potential, much potential for conflict backing out. It is about, actually, the requested variance for setback is 10 feet, but the distance to the garage is a couple of feet further back, so there's a little more maneuvering room to get in and out. The site is 60 by 60. There was some confusion, I think, in the past presentation to the commission about the size of the parcel. I won't go into that detail, just it is a 60, basically 60 by 60-foot parcel. That's the way it's always been. And there's a current record of survey that was done recently that shows that. I wanted to point out a few features on the, with the site conditions right now. So let's see if I can point, I don't know, well, I can't point. I'll just mention, so I wanted to mention that the retaining wall, where we're put, where our proposed retaining wall is, is roughly about a foot behind the existing one. So when we take out that existing retaining wall, there'll be a space behind that, and that's basically where we're going, about a foot behind it. The, I wanted to mention that the fence lines that are there are currently wrong. We have to adjust some fencing, so if you looked at that and sort of wondered about the fencing, they're off. On the north side, it's off about seven feet. It will need to be moved north. That distance, the one on the south, is, needs to be moved back, about five feet. So, and I don't need to spend much time on the, but just to perhaps point out where the point of confusion may have been on the previous submittal. The assessor's map, the prior assessor's map showed this parcel longer than it was, and that was a mapping error by the assessor's office. It can happen from time to time. They have since corrected it, so the assessor's map that's on the left is the current and corrected one, and that was just corrected recently. So it may have been, Mr. Morgan may have presumed that the lot was a little deeper than it actually was. But that's been resolved. I wanted to point out a couple of features on this that, on the image on the top left, you can see the steep slope that we're avoiding to go into. The image below shows the existing retaining wall. And the image on the right shows approximately the setback from the front property line, but also, if you look at the window design, the grid pattern in the window, we're going to be replicating that. Also, the trim, the white with teal, is also in the color palette. And the barn red, we're going to replicate basically the same colors and look. And the metal roof will be a similar light gray. So I wanted to sort of go on record to mention a little bit about Nadine Richards. She was an interior decorator, artist, poet, writer. She was active in the Morro Bay art community from the mid-1930s. She acquired the property in 1939 from her parents, and she built the red cabin all by herself on the backyard of her mother's lot, about maybe a quarter-mile south, at 285 Main Street. She actually literally built every part of that house by herself. That was about 1940. During the war, she left Morro Bay and went to a place in the Bay Area to, I believe, to help construct airplanes for the war effort. She came back and built a sledge, which is just a large wooden sled, if you will, and had some help putting the little cabin on that. She got on a bulldozer by herself, put some chain on it, and drug it down to the site, and had then someone in some way lift it up and put it on the, on top. So just an amazing person that I wanted, I thought was important to say a few words So this is the generally, generalized area of where the cabin will be moved to. Again, we're not really that certain, but we'll work with the Historical Society to sort of fine-tune that. Our role will be really minimal as property owners, we're just trying to assist them as we can. The Morgans are donating the building, as well as all the sort of artifacts and decorations in the building, so that it can be decorated in that same sort of fashion. The moved building piece, there's kind of a two-phase process to that, you might be interested in knowing. So we're first required to get a moved building permit, and that does several things. One, we would get a, and Mr. Morgan will be providing the permit for the moved building permit, which involves capping off the water and sewer lines, disconnecting the electrical lines and other utilities, and cap them off so it's safe, so the building can be moved. And then, and a permit's required for that because the permit goes to the county assessor's office, and that improvement is then removed from the property as an improvement. So there's a reason for the moved building permit. Second to that is the actual moving of the building, which is a different permit process. It goes through Public Works, because it'll be probably moved on the public right away. So they will have the authority to regulate that, as well as a police department will be conferred as well. So that's, that's the process for that. We have a lot of site constraints on this property, which is the need for the variance. And I wanted to point out, just to highlight a few that Cindy also pointed out, but I wanted to mention that, first of all, the, I'm showing on this site plan in red is the location of the existing, the footprint of the existing building. The tan line to the back is where the deck is. And showing again the existing retaining wall, the proposed retaining wall, and then we're, on the second floor, we're cantilevering over a little bit. We're not going into the grade, but just cantilevering over to give a little more room to the second floor. One of the challenges of this design was to try to provide enough relief on the front elevation to really, because we just don't want large unarticulated faces. So I really included a number of little design features to try and provide some relief, some shadow line and differentiation on the front elevation. I thought I would point out just a couple of those things for you. So the circle, this is on the second floor, so we've created this little sort of sitting area alcove that's recessed on the second floor to create, again, break up that massing, create a small area for a couple of small chairs to sit. And then on the lower floor, I've recessed the front entry quite a bit, and then another little area to the right of that, set that in a little bit, so we can have sort of a feature wall of different material. So the result of that, we see on this elevation, we see the upper-floor alcove area with the brown railing, and the garage door is sort of a crisscross to replicate the timber look of the lower floor. And we have lap wood siding. of the lower floor, and we have lap wood siding in that little feature wall area to create interest, to create some shadow line, and I've also, I wanted to separate the upper, lower floor area, so included a roof eyebrow, we call it, separating those two spaces, and that wraps around the building, so it's four-sided architecture, or three-sided. The, so we're also not wanting the building, well, we're wanting to make the building appear as if it's stepping down the slope, so you see on both these elevations, we're gonna be filling in on the side there to create that look. The visual simulations here, I think it's, I wanted to point out that the feature, where the elevator goes up into the roof deck area, from a pedestrian view, it's, we don't believe it's visually obtrusive. It appears much like maybe a large fireplace chimney feature might look. We think it's important, or the Morgans felt it was important to have access to that roof area because, for two reasons. One is the maintenance of solar panels is really important. It's gonna be difficult to get to them otherwise, and they need to be cleaned very frequently in this climate, and it does create a small, will create a small roof area, maybe 10 by 10, where they could have a couple of chairs. Cindy pointed out the view from down Fig Street, so I won't go into that. These are, I just wanted to call your attention to the surrounding homes in the area, and that the scale is roughly similar to what we're looking at. I've made a real concerted effort to follow the design guidelines, and I included a really detailed list of that in my letter to you. If you had a chance to look at that, I won't go into those any further tonight, but just to mention that I really addressed the issues of scale and mass, surface articulation, building orientation toward the street, garage width is less than 50 percent, good use of building materials and elements, and solar access. So really tried to work hard at complying with your design guidelines. The variance findings, I won't go into those. Cindy did a great job of that, so I think what I would do is just conclude with mentioning that the Morgan family appreciates the careful work and coordination with planning staff and with the Morro Bay Historical Society in this process. Furthermore, the Morgan, Morgan family agrees with the conditions of approval and request your approval of the CUP, CDP variance and authorization to relocate the building. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevenson.
I just had one question for Mr. Stevenson.
Let's get through public comment, and then we may call you back up for questions. Does Mr. Morgan have any comment? AGP, is Mr. Morgan online with a hand raised?
Thank you, Chair. He has just raised his hand. I'm going to allow him to talk.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Morgan. You may have the floor for comment.
No, I just appreciate the Planning Commission looking at the project. I don't really have anything to add that Chuck hasn't already said, or that hasn't been covered in the questions. We are committed to, have been working diligently to find a home for the building that's on the property, and we are committed to that.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so we will now open for general public comment. Mr. Silaway? Welcome.
Thank you, Chairperson Stewart. Commission and staff, thank you for letting us have a couple of minutes here. I am Glenn Silaway. I'm the president of the Historical Society of Morro Bay. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. I'd like to start out just by thanking the Morgans for recognizing the historic value of this little house, Nadine Richards' Little Red House, which we've called a cabin, a house, and a couple of other things here. It is red, for sure. It's sitting now at the bottom of the slope on their lot. It's been there since 1952. You saw how it was placed there. Nadine made this a work of art in its own way. I'm appreciative that the family has offered the Little Red House to the Historical Society in order to preserve it. The Morgans commissioned an archaeological and historical assessment of the little house by Nancy Farrell and Betsy Bertrand for Cultural Resource Management Services in 2017. I'm gonna quote their conclusion. "Nadine's red cottage represents the significance of the early art community that has sustained and grown into an important cornerstone of Morro Bay. The cottage should be conserved to the extent possible as an intact example of unique Morro Bay history." We agree. It should be preserved. We do not have an historic preservation ordinance in this town yet. We're hoping that that happens in the near future. I don't know for sure that it would make this whole process easier, but it would certainly give us perhaps some guidance about how to treat the property. The cottage seems to us to meet the standards for historic significance. You're looking at its ownership, its role in the community, its providence. Obviously, it's a unique building that is significantly, a special indicator of being in Morro Bay. If you've walked out of the Tidylands Park and looked left, you see it. The Historical Society's been working on the pieces that we would need to do to preserve the house, and there's a lot of money needed. The most expensive, Chuck, is moving it. There are very few house movers. We've got a firm estimate from one of them, and we will continue seeking more. We've also had some back-of-the-napkin planning analysis by experienced developers for things like foundation, utilities, grading, restoration of the property, because moving it is gonna put some damage in it also. So we're looking at a number that's probably around $150,000 or north of that for the total project. We do not have this money in hand. We need to raise it, and it's a significant lift for a small group like ours. We have people in our group, though, who have experienced these kinds of problems before. We're confident we can do it, but you need to know that that fundraising has to be done to get this completed. One piece of good news here is that the community, our community development organization has found a piece of property that we can possibly move it to. We are working on putting together the application for that. We have a professional survey in process that would support that application, and we'll continue to work actively with them to get this done. As far as the visitor-serving function goes, yes, that is our goal. We don't know exactly how that's gonna work yet because the property will not comply with ADA requirements. I don't think. Professional needs to say that, but I think that there are some issues with that, so how we use it is yet to be determined. All that said, the one thing I have heard from everybody I've talked to about this is, it's a good idea. Let's save the building, and we're committed to trying to do that. And the idea of getting together with the Morgans, with this staff, right now, soon, to talk through this whole relocation process, I think is absolutely essential idea. We should do it now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Silaway. I'd like to state for the record that Mr. Ingraffia has joined the panel, so let the record show that we are now a full quorum. Any other public comment on this item? Certainly.
My name is Eric Meyer. I was born in this neighborhood 500 feet away, and I'm not here to debate the pluses and minuses of the project. I'm here for a little higher altitude. Morro Bay is known as an historic fishing village, but do you know who its early fishermen were before the Navy built the Embarcadero, before World War II? Do you know where they lived? Do you know where their houses are? Do you know anything about their history or their cultural anthropological resources? Glenn Bickford, Frank Brebs, Albert Broyles, Arthur Carroll, James Cunningham, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There's Adrian Pierce, about 16 different Pierces. Bill Pierce, Leslie Pierce, Jason Valentine, Frank Herrera, blah, 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 blah. These fishermen, we don't really know that much about them other than their names. A couple of them, we might know where their house was, because nobody saved those houses. Do you also know that there was in our colony? Yes, we know this, right. Do you know who was in that art colony? Aaron Kilpatrick, Harold Knott, Nadine Richards, Charles Robinson, Charlotte Skinner? You know that four of those houses are within 500 feet of Nadine's? You probably don't, because nobody knows, because we don't have any historical resources. We don't know anything about our cultural history because we don't have any requirement in our city for that. Do we know that people like William Wimp, famous, globally famous 1920s painters, were in Morro Bay? Alston Clark, et cetera, their painting, we have paintings in my handout in the back are paintings from these painters from the 20s. Before Morro Bay was a fishing village. It was an art colony. So I'm just asking your guys' thoughts. This home was the home of Nadine's Richards. Its downstairs was her studio, so I'm told. It's almost directly in the center of the old art colony. She was one of the first five artists to be part of the scene. 30 years later, in the 50s, this little art colony on the side of Srito Peak was nicknamed Beatnik Hill because of the architects and intellectuals that lived there. People like, well, there's a long list. I won't worry with the list. Well, there's still a few artists. 93-year-old Art Dorothy Cutter lives there. She's an artist. Nancy Dunn lived there. She was an artist. She's 90. Everett Jensen's 92. He lived right next door to Nadine. These are all pretty famous artists locally. More in the 50s and 60s, though, after Nadine moved her little house. Gregory Bateson, you might know him. He's kind of famous. He lived there. Jerry Rep, architect. George Nagano, architect. Anyway, I'm told this little house will be saved, which is great. What they didn't mention to you is that the downstairs is gonna be demolished, but I don't know who decided that that was okay. I think that's kind of your purview to decide whether the downstairs is demolished or not. It's not up to somebody else. I think the city needs to decide that sort of thing, not, with respect to Mr. Silaway and Chuck, et cetera. Chuck and I were on the Planning Commission in St. Louis, and I was on the Planning Commission for the St. Louis County as well. Anyway, I just ask that you, you think about whether or not Morro Bay needs an historic resources list. I'm sorry, I'm extending like, one little, I would ask you to condition this project on a few things. The op can has said they'll paint it a certain color. That's what we used to call Portuguese red in old Morro Bay. That's one thing. The colors, maybe. This roofing, maybe, if you guys think that's appropriate. I would ask that you condition the project on whether or not it should be two stories or one stories after it's being moved. Is that important? Is it? I'm not gonna say it is or isn't, but I think that somebody needs to. And then, I think that the project should be conditioned on approval of obtaining a new site, because what happens if we don't get the new site that's suggested? Then what? The building sits on a trailer somewhere and gets demolished. So I think the building needs to be saved. Whether or not it's saved somewhere or other, I don't know, but it shouldn't just be left in limbo. The project can proceed, but there needs to be some sort of contingency for what happens to the house if this next location doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
I guess I won the coin toss with Betty. My name is Terry Simons, Morro Bay resident. I'm a 40-plus-year general engineering and building contractor. I'm here, well, first of all, let me say I'm very concerned about the rabbit hole of the relocation to the Historical Society. I think it would be ill-conceived of this commission to condition a building of a new building on this historic relocation. I think those are separate issues, and I think it puts an incredibly unnecessary burden on the property owner to have to wait to see if something's gonna be available to move this building out. If they wanna move it, and they wanna pay to move it, and they wanna pay to store it, that's fine, but I think it's really a mistake. It's a rabbit hole that you don't wanna go down if you start adding too many conditions on a new building project that this building be preserved. Having said that, I have serious concerns about the project itself, because I feel the project is neither without special privilege, nor it's not precedent-setting. The proposal for a reduced setback will ultimately conflict with the use of the boat ramp in the Tidylands Park parking lot, because the need for parking in front of the proposed residence, without sufficient setback, 20 feet vehicles parked in front of the garage will extend into the Embarcadero right-of-way. This is in direct conflict with the settlement agreement reached with the property owners to establish the limit of their liitoral rights, and that would be the Ogle-at-all, the city of Morro Bay. It's about 40 years ago, 45 years ago, and it was originally the property owner's contention that they owned the land across Tidylands Park all the way to the water, because that's what their deeds said. This, the lawsuit went on for quite some time, and it was settled establishing the fence line as the agreed property line. It's questionable as to what property rights these properties have to actually access the Embarcadero. There's been a gentleman's agreement to have fences and gates primarily for boathouses and these kinds of things. I'm very concerned that if this house is approved, it will set a precedent for all the properties that front the Tidylands Park parking lot, and every one of those will eventually develop into high-end luxury, two-story-plus residences along this parking lot. I fundamentally don't have a problem with it. I think we just have to acknowledge that that will be a significant change in the visual impact of the Tidylands Park parking lot as it exists today. This portion of the Embarcadero does not have frontage improvements, and they should be required as a part of the project. The frontage improvement should be behind the existing fence line. This property is just one of several with the liitoral rights for the settlement with the city. All of the properties along this portion of Embarcadero will look to this project for their future, future development. The residence should be set back to a minimum of 20 feet, and I would concede that only the garage needs to be set back 20 feet, and I think the architecture would allow you to do that. Certainly, the siding and the grading needed to do that are already anticipated by the grading plan. They're gonna do a full-height retaining wall at the back of the garage anyway. They can move it back another six or eight feet. This will ultimately potentially require the removal of the tree behind the proposed building. I believe this tree should be removed now. It may not be possible because of its scale and age, because it's gonna be a hazard to the long-term future of the residence. Planning staff should look at the long-term impact of the Tidylands Park area of the Embarcadero and develop appropriate development standards for the future development of the anticipated residences that will be requested as reasonable additions to all the properties along the right-of-way. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have more public comment? Ms. Winholz?
Betty Winholz, this is my neighborhood, and I feel fortunate to now live where Eric grew up. It's a lovely little special area of Morro Bay. I'm jazzed that we're going to be preserving the house. I think that's real important, and unlike the previous speaker, I would like to see that qualification put into the, as has been added to the requirements. I'm glad that the legal settlement was brought up by the previous speaker, because I don't know if you're aware of that, and you need to be aware of that, because you don't know what's legally required or if staff does or not. With that chain-link fence, in terms of access, that's one of the first things I thought about. Will the chain-link fence be required to come back up? And if so, I mean, that's just a really awkward situation to not have something there, I think, to protect that house from all the people that was by there and of good nature and of not good nature. So I think that that's real important. I think Terry also brought up a good point about the precedent-setting. I would hope that there would be some kind of way that it could be stated that this is such a unique situation. It's not a through lot. We don't need to have this happen on the other lots that go down the length of the legal settlement, but I think you need to look at that legal settlement and see what obligations there are or not. It is, I have some concern that the retaining wall's gonna go back into the bluff a little further. It's very steep. I think that's dangerous, and I don't know if it's high enough. I wonder if the retaining wall actually needs to be higher. And of course, I would vote for the preservation of that tree. Let me see if I've got everything else that I want the access. I'm concerned about the solar panels. You know, it is kind of a shaded area. Is that really, unless it's required? I don't know if that will be a successful place to have solar. Maybe it is. I'm not so much concerned about the look. I'm just more concerned about the access and the protection of the fence and the property and what it may or may not do to the properties next to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winholz. And it looks like we have no one else in the audience, so I'm And it looks like we have no one else in the audience, so I'm going to close public comment. Oh, do we have anybody? Thank you. Do we have anybody online for public comment?
Thank you, Chair. We have no raised hands in the queue.
All right, thank you. So public comment is closed. We will reserve an opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Stevenson, and I think Mr. Silaway in this case would be important to have on hand. Let's start off with commission discussion and/or questions based on the public comment that you've heard. Mike?
I think Mr. Stevenson was going to come up, but I was going to ask you a question earlier. And Mr. Morgan's on the line, and the historical person's here, so this is the question I had. Cindy had produced some additional condition or additional, you know, language that would go as part of that condition. Can you put that up, Cindy? I just want to just review it real quick with you, because Mr. Morgan's going to have, you're going to have to accept it. Mr. Morgan's going to have to accept it. So let's just get it out there now. And then we had Scott come up with another sentence that we're going to add in addition to that. So let's just get it out there, okay?
Sure.
And then let's talk about it. So I just want to make sure you're going to be okay with it, and then we can always go back to public comment, but I want to make sure you understand where we're headed with this additional condition. So I'll wait for staff to get it, and then we'll add that language, that last sentence he added.
He's trying to put it in there, I think.
Because I think that's really important, Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Morgan, that we understand that this condition's going to be there. It's going to go with the approval from the planning commissioner, planning commission, excuse me, and there will be some kind of, you know, it's not going to just drop, you know, it's not going to be allowed to just linger and nothing happen. We heard that from the public, saying we don't want this to just die on the vine, right? Something's going to have to happen, so I think we may even add a little bit more to make sure something does happen. And then there was the comment about how long will this take, and the person who wants to build a home is going to have to wait, right? So why don't we just get the condition first, and then you can address all that stuff?
Sure.
To make sure you're comfortable with it.
I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
Good. But I think we start with the condition, right, Mr. Stevenson, then we drill off of that, right? We go off the condition regarding timing.
Sure.
You know, and everything.
Talk about that.
Okay, good.
So Scott or Cindy, would you like to reread the condition, or I could probably do it from here?
Yeah, so it says applicant shall prepare and submit a relocation plan for review that provides for relocation of the Little Red House prior to issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall work with the Morro Bay Historical Society on the relocation plan for the Little Red House.
Now, the question is, are you okay with that additional language with the condition?
I'm going to parse it out a little bit. So we are comfortable with the idea of a plan that would explain how that we would provide the permit, the moved building permit. That's part of the, part of the plan is the moved building permit, which we've, which we agree to provide. We feel that's our responsibility, because the building, the utilities need to be capped off properly, and the building needs to be ready to be moved, and that is, we accept that part. As far as the move, as far as moving the building, we, that's part of the Historical Society's role in moving, actually physically moving the building. As far as the site location, I'm not sure we really have a voice in that at this point, because I think what our idea was, was donating the building to the Morro Bay Historical Society was a pretty significant thing to do, and it's important. And the Morgans, they feel a devotion and a love for that building. They want to see it preserved. It may, in fact, be a while before we complete our construction documents. We have to get structural engineering, civil for drainage. We're probably looking at, you know, months before we get into the building permit process. That takes some time. Then there's the issue of supply chain and contractors and stuff, so it could be a prolonged period before we would ever break ground. Just being realistic about that. So it's in this interim period of time where the Morro Bay Historic Society can work on their fundraising, come up with a concept that they want to have, work with city staff on developing that concept. We, I don't see Mr. Morgan involved in that planning piece. That just seems, that's not our role in this, if you will. But I do think that, just realistically, as I said before, getting to the point of actually beginning construction is probably next summer at least. And so that gives a lot of, I think, a lot of time. We just can't, we just can't forecast exactly that timing, but that's probably realistic.
Because staff did put that additional verbiage in there, so if you look at that, can you just tell me what part of it you wouldn't be comfortable with? Yeah, because, you know, if we approve it, it's going to be, that's the way it'll be.
It does say provides for the relocation, but it doesn't say where.
Yeah, I never, yeah, I never thought the site was, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, the site was.
I think, I think as I described it, we'd be comfortable if the language could be changed to reflect that. I think we're comfortable. We're willing to accept a requirement to provide the moved building permit to work with them in a cooperative way for time, and timing-wise, they need, you know, so... But that's, we see sort of our role ending at that point.
Yeah. Because I think we discussed it, that I don't think it's our role to determine the site. That's not why we're here. We're here to approve this project, right? This development. But, you know, that's where we're going to need your support, you know, staff support in trying to figure out this.
The condition doesn't speak to the location or determining the location. It really is just, the intent behind this is really just having the applicant work with the Historical Society, accommodating them to move the building off the.
Because I never felt site was on our, anyway.
I think there's a real distinction between providing the permit, capping off the utilities, and having that be the responsibility of the owner, and then paying for the movement. Those are two different things.
Correct.
And I think it's pretty important that we stipulate that, just because providing for the relocation is way more than capping off the utilities and getting a permit. And so I think in order to avoid, I think clarifying that language would probably be helpful.
And that was my goal and purpose, was to make sure we could put the verbiage in that the applicant and the applicant's representative could accept. I don't want to put something forward that they're going to reject, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Thank you.
As long as you're up there, would you address the question about solar? Do you feel comfortable with the positioning of those panels and being able to collect enough solar energy to make that viable?
Oh, yeah, I'm confident of that. You know, the sun, the sun is going to move, obviously. There may be some shading. The cypress tree is beautiful. There's, we have no intent on losing that tree. Obviously, for horticultural practices, if it needs to be trimmed for safety purposes, obviously, and that has been done in the past, but that's been very carefully manicured over time, so that is a, that's a, that's a non-negotiable, we're not going to remove the tree at this point, unless there was something comes up in the future where it's determined to be a hazard, and that's a different subject, but.
That's good to hear.
The solar is required as also now under the green energy code, so, and we're, you know, we're we're just not sure how many panels. I'm guessing a minimum of nine will be needed for that. And I've showed that on my revised plan, so.
The question about the chain-link fence, I, for one, was kind of glad to think that it wouldn't be there, but it also occurred to me that puts that house so close to public.
Right. So the intent of the agreement that Mr. Simons was talking about, and I think others have sort of alluded to, was to provide, to provide access. That's where the gate was specifically mentioned, to provide access. There's a driveway there now. They park up on that. I appreciate the concern, though, about cars sticking out into the driveway, and that's not going to be, it should not be acceptable. And so there might be some condition to that, that cars cannot be parked halfway in the driveway and out into the streetway. There is a no-parking zone along the fence, so there is no parking along the fence there, and that would continue. Our vision, I think, for fencing would be something that would create some separation. I think a three-foot fence, three-foot-high decorative fence that sort of ties into the architecture would be appropriate. I'm sort of envisioning a small, maybe an 18-inch wall with a small fence above it that ties in with the architecture. We haven't really got to that design stage yet, but something that separates that space that looks appropriate, not a six-foot fence.
Okay. And then finally, for now, the question about moving the lower half of the building. I know that came up in our discussions, and you and/or Mr. Silaway may want to address that. As I recall, some of the concerns were having, there's, there will be challenges already with accessibility issues, and so having a two-story and trying to, you know, again, prepare a site and do a two-story removal would be sort of beyond, in terms of finances anyhow, but also, again, creating these accessibility issues. So, and Glenn, you may have more memories of that, and then Mr. Stevenson, if you have any comments on that.
Well, I really would defer to Glenn on that question. I mean, there has been some discussion about possibly doing a two-story, but there would be significant accessibility issues that would come up for that. So, but I think the key thing that we've understood, at least, is that you can, the building is, the interior of the building is all visible from the front door. You can, you could walk in or look into the front door and see the entire space and appreciate it, because it's so amazing. So you don't need to, probably don't need to go into the building per se, but just a short distance in or just looking in would be, would probably be fine to sort of tell the story.
Okay. And Mr. Silaway, do you have any additions to that?
I think that between you and Chuck, you've basically said the issue is that that understory there is heavy and difficult to move, but also if we move both pieces and put it back in place the way it is now, there will be no accessibility at all. And the upper story, which is the first part that Nadine built, that was the original Little Red House for 10 years on its own, was her home. So it has a longer historical continuity to it. The understory would be nice if we could figure out what to do with it. We've talked about that a little bit internally, about preserving that in a different format. But if we want to be able to use the house for a visitor-serving function, then whatever's on the ground floor is what people are going to be able to access. And if the Little Red House is eight feet up, they won't, because the ADA problems would be, I think, prohibitive. But the experts' purview can tell me otherwise, but that's our thinking right now, is we have to separate the two pieces.
Okay. Thank you for that. Asia, you had some questions.
I just have a quick question about why this isn't, I understand we don't have a local ordinance, but is this building not on the National Historic Preservation? Why isn't it?
It does not qualify. So there was a report done, and it does not qualify.
Yeah.
I think, I may bring up later in the meeting when we're looking at future agenda items, and just so the audience knows, this commission, were you on it then? Did, as part of our goals, the primary, the first goal that we had was to put forward the Historic Preservation Ordinance for the community, and the council had so many other things on their agendas that that did not make the cut with their goals, but I am hopeful that for the coming year, the next goal-setting process, we can get that ordinance pushed forward.
I guess, I appreciate that we all really see the value in this, in preserving this. But there's also, because it's not actually legally preserved, like, there's a few things about that. It seems like the, we have the benefit of doing probably a lot more than if it was on the Historic Registry with the building. You know, it's hard to move historic buildings when they're registered. And then also, the owner isn't held to those historical standards on the registry, and so to some degree, the donation itself is is going above and beyond. They could just destroy this property. It's not protected, and so I just want to, I don't know, bring that up.
Appreciate the owners for their efforts to save it, yes.
Susan, can I say something? It occurs to me that the building in its particular location, and it's, well, first of all, let me apologize for being late for the meeting, but I had a medical emergency that I had to attend to. The location in the particular building, I think, dates from about 1952. Is that correct? So its current appearance is, you know, 70, 70 years old. And it strikes me as, there's an odd irony in that while we would like to preserve the entire building because of its 70-year historic presence in the community, we can't do that because of the need to make it available to a disabled segment of the population. So therefore, we're considering essentially mutating this historical relic in order to accommodate that. It seems to me like the tail is wagging the dog here, to put it bluntly. And I'm not sure what to do about that, but I did want to, I did want to state the rather obvious conclusion. And I just, I I resent having to do something that I know at my core is the wrong approach to this.
I would like to give Mr. Roshan an opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you, Sue. But we're still asking questions, right?
Sure.
Questions both for staff and also for the owner's rep, Mr. Morgan's rep. I have a couple of questions, one on the architecture.
We're losing your signal, Bill. AGP, can you clean that up a little bit?
No, Chair, we cannot. That is entirely on Zooms, and there's nothing we can do about a bad connection.
Let me try again. Is that any better?
That's better.
Okay. I have a question on the elevator.
Okay, we lost you again. I'm guessing you're wondering why the elevator?
I wanted to understand, the elevator is going up to the roof, is that right?
And the second floor, I believe. Yeah.
The question.
Email me, Bill. Email me the question.
Yeah, you could email or text. There must be snowstorms back east.
So we could always, you know, try to get it.
So if I can, while we're waiting for Commissioner Roshan, one thought I wanted to share about the lower portion of the building. She, Nadine Richards, built that as well. That was preceded, before she put the cabin on it, she used that as a studio. It had a roof on it. It was a, it was a place. So in terms of how the Historical Society could simply display that as side-by-side, this was phase one. This was her studio. This was the house. It's easy to imagine that going on there, and still could be a really interesting display of her work. She built both places.
Can I stop the video?
Bill, we can hear you again.
Oh, good. I'm going to stop the video and see if that helps the.
That may help.
Okay, so what my question was, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. The elevator, it's got great bulk, so I did want to kind of understand, is it real? That was one question. My second question was.
So, Bill, we missed that question. You started cutting out again.
Just the scale of the elevator as it goes 10 feet above the roof. That's, it's going to be a big portion of the building. And I'm questioning that. Second question, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Is the parking. What happens up against that wall? Is it a driveway in the parking lot?
There's a driveway into the garage that is somewhat shorter, and there is no parking allowed along the frontage of the house as it is.
Right, but what's there? But what's there? Is that a driveway or in other words, will the cars have to back out into the parking lot from the drive from the garage?
They back out into what's basically the street. When you go into that that tidlin's parking lot area, it actually you you sort of drive into the right and veer around to park, and then you loop around back out in front of the house.
It's part it's the Embarcadero right-of-way, actually.
Yeah. I mean, it's a road.
Is it Scott, is it used as a driving aisle for the parking lot?
It's it's part of the parking lot, but but it's actually also the Embarcadero road. So, yeah, it's actually it's.
All right. So you're backing out into a public right-of-way, right?
Correct.
All right.
Which most driveways do.
Correct.
Well, not with zero setback.
Well, and this would be the driveway would be range from 11 and 1/2 to about 12 and 1/2 feet, and we have portions of town where the driveway length requirement is only 10 feet. So this would be similar to.
So it's it's a 10-foot setback. Okay.
Yeah.
I guess my other question would be for Cindy. I'm concerned about the precedent and the lack of standards along this whole Embarcadero, you know, along the whole parking. And I'm mainly concerned about the access from the bluff to the parking lot. Can you tell me, when you say no special privilege, what does that what does that really mean?
So if I heard you correctly, so no special privilege would mean that the applicant is not being afforded something special or or you might need to help me out here.
So, so, Bill, Commissioner Roshan, sorry. The in this instance, it's a couple of things. You heard every you heard folks previously talking about the settlement agreement that provides access there. So these lots all have access to the Embarcadero in this location, period. They all have that access. Secondarily, there is no access from this lot to Main Street like there is for the other lots around it. So this is truly a unique situation, one that does not exist over there, hence the ability to make findings for a variance, and hence the recommendation from staff.
And that makes sense to me, Scott, because that's why this one lot would be allowed access to the parking lot. If we say no special privilege, I'm worried that that would present a precedent for the other lots, which I think both two speakers, Betty and Terry Simon, I think, both brought up. You know, would another lot next would be able then to ask for access? Do you see what my question is?
I think they would not because they already have access to a main road from the other side of the properties.
They also so these other lots also have access.
They decide to ask for it.
So sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Roshan. What was that?
I'm asking you because what if a project decides they want access there, right?
So they already have access because of the settlement agreement, and so most of those lots and along the chain link fence have double gates that you could open and drive a car into. But the city would still have discretionary authority about whether you take primary access to that, which I think is is part of the concern, like, are we going to end up with a bunch of houses down here? I think the answer to the question is no, and I think we have all the discretionary authority we need to say that. You know, from the planning commission standpoint, it would that would not be consistent with the development plan. This is truly, again, I would say, again, it's a unique situation.
Got it. But what I want to make sure is that we're saying that now, if we go ahead and approve this, there's a lot of good reasons to do that. If we set a precedent that somebody eventually 10 years from now wants to do the same thing, how do we have certainty that we haven't changed the whole nature of the edge?
Because we granted a variance for this. It's literally the variance process that we're granting for this.
So somebody else would go through a variance process and and say that the precedent is the Little Red House?
I don't I don't know that they would be able to say the exact same things. They have access to Main Street, whereas this lot does not.
And so you think that's the key for the argument, that there could not be following precedents on this, is because of the access issue?
Agreed, and I and I think that any argument that we made along those lines would be difficult to, you know, to substantiate in front of the planning commission.
No, for sure. But I'm just I'm trying to make sure it's settled now, not 10 years from now.
Fair point.
Okay. That were my questions. I have comments. Comments are later.
I think we could probably go ahead and get into comments, as long as we have you on a clear line at this point. We might want to grab it.
So my comments are, I've got, I guess, two concerns. One, I really want to thank the Morgans, and I want to celebrate Nadine Richards. This is really a treasure of an opportunity. And I guess my concerns are that, like Betty, I think we have to condition this sufficiently so we don't end up with a house that can't be relocated. Right now, the burden seems to be following following follow falling on the Historical Society. And if they can't raise the money, then what happens to the house? I think the conditions have to have a way that we know where the house is. Does it get located somewhere else so the project can can proceed? And would that be the burden of the owner? Or does the project have to wait until the house can be moved? But somehow, we need the certainty that because this happens all the time, where you get into a project and all of a sudden, you know, the $150,000, which is a lot of money to raise here in Moro Bay, I think, doesn't come about, and then we lose this really treasure of a building. So I guess I would hope we could put conditions on on the on that where the project cannot proceed until the house can be relocated and saved. I think we can introduce that. That would be my proposal, that we work on that. I guess my other concern was precedent precedent, and Scott is telling me that it won't create a precedent, that we don't need new standards along the parking lot to deal with the neighbors. I want to make sure and hear Scott say, yes, you're right, Bill, one more time.
Yes, you're correct, Commissioner Roshan.
Hate to see that happen. Yeah.
Yeah, you're correct. I don't think there's an issue there.
Okay. So then my biggest concern really is that I think we have to set conditions on on the house that makes the owner somehow either but they have to be a participant in moving this because I don't think the project can go forward without moving the house. I don't want to see the house get demolished or abandoned, right? So the project can 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 proceed. So that would be the the language I would love to put in there. In fact, not love, I think we have to.
Okay, Bill. Thank you for that. More discussion. Joe?
So am I correct in understanding that this house could be demolished if the owner so sought to do that, and that independent of that, he could make this application and make the appeal for the variance based on his locating the house below the bluff and not destroying the tree? Am I correct in that?
So that's normally how you often see projects come forward like that, that they're demolishing the existing home that's there and building a new one. This is no different than that. We had the Historic Resource Report done, and it's not does not qualify for either at the federal or state level. And the report basically came back saying that it is historically significant or historically relevant to Moro Bay, which I don't think anybody here would argue. But that's we don't have that in any report or anything that's documented, so making that a finding for like denial of a project or something, I don't think we could probably do that. You know, from a from a legal standpoint, because we're not relying on anything that's been adopted by the city that identifies it as historic to anything. So this is the process that we have. We have an entity that's interested in, you know, preserving it. To take seriously Commissioner Roshan's desire to, you know, actually lock in a condition that that requires them to prepare a plan and work with the Historical Society to make that come to fruition. I think the condition that we have largely does that because if they can't comply with what the condition says currently, if we don't change it, then they would have to come back to us, meaning the commission, to change it. Because I think clearly, at this point, the desire, you know, of the commission, everybody here is just to be nodding their head. I can't see Commissioner Roshan, but he's speaking to it, is.
I'm in agreement, Scott. That sounds right. And I think that would be enough for me. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So I think I mean, I think we have that piece of it if the rest of the commission is interested in that. I know the applicant probably isn't really happy about that, and maybe you want to have him come up here and at least, you know, speak his piece to that. But this is a condition that, you know, like if they were unable to Historical Society was unable to raise the money to move the move the home, then we would have to come back and say, okay, what's the solution now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, can you come back to the commission?
The commission.
Back to the planning commission, yeah. This committee, I keep you're adding this condition tonight. This is not something staff can change. It has to be brought back to you to amend the condition to account for whatever the new solution is. Maybe we're taking it and storing it someplace or something. I don't know.
Can I just clarify, Scott, for just Bill's benefit and for all of ours, and then we'll have the applicant's rep come up and go at it? So, Bill, this is what we put in because I don't think you can see it, but this is our condition. Applicants shall prepare and submit a relocation plan for review that provides for relocation of the Little Red House prior to issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall work with the Historical Society of Moro Bay on the relocation plan for the Little Red House in Moro Bay. I don't know. I couldn't see the end of it.
Oh, the end of it, that's that's part of the the tag that's on it. That's all.
So did you hear that, Bill? Bill? Yeah. I just want to make sure Bill knows what he can't see. That's the condition, and I think he agrees with that.
It sounded like he does. I think that I think the idea is that that it just if it doesn't come to fruition here, that that it's not just done, and then the house gets demolished.
Comes back to us.
And we never see it again. So I think that's pretty clearly the desire of the commission. A sign of head nods. So that's sort of I believe this condition does that. I don't know. This is entirely what Representative for the project, Stevenson, was thinking, so you might want to give him the opportunity to speak.
Again, just for the sake of a clarification, so in a scenario in which the Historical Society and the applicant agree that the house should be moved and the expense should be borne by the Historical Society, and the expense is going to be $100, $150,000, and the Historical Society will raise that money. So we have a definite plan. Now, that that's the extent of the applicant's responsibility because I'm looking at the scenario in which, despite best intentions, it takes much longer for the Historical Society to raise the money, if ever. So.
Yeah, that's why we have to come back. Okay, what are we going to do now?
Yeah. But does that does that in any way delay the homeowner, the applicant, in his plans to?
I mean, I think if we were getting down towards the process, the we would know this because the applicant would be going through plan check, and we're like, okay, you know, we're a month out from getting you a building permit, and they don't have the plan. I mean, it would be before that. But I mean, I think probably when they're submitting for a building permit, we would want to know where the Historical Society stands on being able to move it because that process for a house isn't doesn't take all that long. It's probably, you know, four or five months at the most. So.
And potentially, we could have approved, ready to issue, building permits, but not quite yet a plan, and then that could hold up issuance of the building permit because we're still trying to figure out, you know, the Little Red House. So there, you know, we do sometimes have that where can't quite issue the building permit because there's one thing that we're waiting on.
And in this scenario, the plan would have to essentially, it sounds like, include a plan for where the Little Red House was going to go.
And then Historical Society is working on that. We might actually have that piece in place before they have the money raised to actually move it.
Sure. So that would also require, most likely, a whole nother process of coming before the planning commission. So we're we're conditioning, I'm just thinking, like, if they are trying to get a permit to build next summer, then it then it puts I just don't see how the Historical Society can raise the money and move the house and get the permits to locate that house in six to eight months.
They're already working on the permits for the location. They already have a place, you know, identified, and they're working with us on bringing forward a plan that we would be able to to approve to relocate the home there. The other piece is the is the raising of the funds. I can't speak to it.
And the thing, I I've been here, done that somewhere else, but and Mr. Stevenson can speak to this, you know, you said by next summer. Obviously, you're going to know what staff knows about issuing permits and moving this home by then. So you're going to have that information, so you could always come back to the planning commission or work with staff to make sure we you meet that requirement, that requirement, or come back to us to talk to us about what else may happen, right? So in other words, we're not putting our feet in cement yet, but remember, by next June, we're going to have to know something about where the house is going and to issue your permit to build, right? You know that. Something like that.
I think.
Yeah. Well, that's why we're putting it on him now.
I think within and sort of the the bigger picture, the broader picture, I know the Morgans' desire is to not demolish the house. That's that's sort of the last straw here. I think, though, that there may be other alternatives than the Historical Society taking the building. It may end up on a ranch. It may end up in somebody's backyard. It's a small building, so there are options to where it can go. I mean, our desire would be that, obviously, the Historical Society get it. But I don't think we're going to obligate ourselves too long waiting on some on a fundraising effort. If it's not going to work, then we really need if that if we're going to be tied to our building permit issuance, there have to be alternatives in the plan that allow for options for where that building can go if it doesn't end up going to the Historical Society. So as long as that that was my sort of idea behind this condition, the plan would be several-fold, look at options for location, and also to not we to not particularly obligate us to more than just providing the moved building permit. We're donating the building, and we're paying for the moved building permit to get it ready to be moved, and that's the extent of what I believe is fair for this owner. But we also would like to, you know, provide some provision in the plan for options if it doesn't work in terms of the Historical Society. So, I mean, the way it's constructed now, we would we would go back and prepare a plan, I'll meet with Cindy and go over the idea, develop a plan with Glenn, try to come up with a reasonable timeframe and a reasonable approach.
So what if it takes three months longer? That's what I'm trying to say. So what if it may we need another three months to get the money and everything else?
Well, I think I think if you're that far, if the historical if the Moro Bay Historic District is that far along, then I don't think that we should you should hold up a building permit. If they're that close and they're, you know, things are really moving, if it's if it's not, if it's if it's not moving at all, then I think we need to think about alternatives of where that building can go. And it may not be to the preferred site.
I do appreciate that it sounds like the goal of the family is to save the building somewhere.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think that's an important point, just in terms of an emotional response to this. You know, you don't want to have to move a building twice. It would be great to move it once and have it available to the public, but if that isn't possible, that the family is interested in preserving that little house somewhere is good to hear.
And can I just say something, Scott? Because this is this may happen. So we are going to write this condition as part of the approval, this what we added here. If it doesn't happen, you're going to come back to the planning commission and say, the Historical Society couldn't get it done. So let's write, let's let us move forward, and we're going to put this Little Red House somewhere else. Because you couldn't work with our Historical Society in getting it done. What I'm saying is, I hope it works, but if it doesn't, you can come back to the planning commission and say, you tried.
Well, we'd prefer not to have to come back to your commission. We'd prefer to have the plan be explicit on what will happen if this or if that. If it doesn't work, the plan will specify our options, and that'll be approved by the planning director. So.
So Mike, this is this is Bill, and I have to say, I agree with you. I think the option is if they if the Historical Society can't raise the money to move it, then the Morgans have to come back to the commission. So we don't see the building disposed of in a different way. And what the commission is giving them today is a variance that's substantial, a variance that accesses, you know, the the parking lot, a variance that reduces the setback, and a totally unique, you know, privilege to. and a totally unique, you know, privilege to access that parking lot. I'm not willing to vote for that variance unless we have that condition in the, in the motion to protect, to, to ensure protection of the building. If, if the Morgans come back, we can negotiate it at that point and understand the reality, but I don't want to negotiate that now would be my vote. And I'm happy to make a motion to that effect when we're ready.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to discuss that a little more, I'm not sure we're ready for that.
I, I.
Joe.
So, I'd like to examine that last scenario. So, the Historical Society plan essentially fails. And, and we today say that the applicant is required to come back to the planning commission and present us with another plan for the house, or we won't allow him to, to continue with his construction of the house. And in effect, we are denying the applicant his ability to build the house unless he agrees in some fashion to preserve the Little Red House, and yet we don't have a law on the books that says that he can, that we can require that to be done. But it seems like, you know, the fact, though, we are, we are trying to accomplish something for which we do not have a law.
But, but can I offer, Joe?
Please.
What we're trying to do is because we're giving him a variance, a substantial variance, to locate the first, and I would imagine, and hopefully, the only house on the parking lot, with, you know, there's no standards for what that house should be on that parking lot. I'm suggesting the variance we're offering is worth something, it's substantial. And I'm not saying how we have to handle the house, but what we want to do is not make that decision now, but not allow the owner, if things don't go well in nine months or a year, to go ahead and demolish the house and move on with the project.
So, why not just make it a.
No, but I.
I, I don't.
I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing with that point at all. It's, it's the consequences that we're supposing will come out of that second meeting at the planning commission. At, at that.
I would also argue that this is not asking for a substantial variance. It is, in my mind, a reasonable one based on the existing site, on the footprint of the existing house, which is down on the waterfront. The setback of the driveway and the front of the house is similar to what's there now, but because, when it was originally done, it was the good old days before any sorts of codes existed, you know, to bring it up to compliance, they would have to go further into the bluff, which we don't want to do. So, the idea of building this house to fit this lot, you know, the variance they're asking for is basically that difference of ten feet versus twenty feet. And to me, that's not significant in terms of other things that we have done. It's, it's important, but I don't think it, it's the significance that says that they should hold, have their project on hold until this location is found for the Little Red House, given that they have said they are willing to preserve the house, whether it goes to the Historical Society or not.
So, it's not surprising, Susan, once again, we're in odds, you and me, but I guess why I would say it is a significant variance is when that house was there, that was years ago, there were no standards, that's grandfathered. That I understand. To build something new on that site is a substantial ask. And it's not just the reduction of the setback, it's the allowance to have access without any standards or any plan to the parking lot.
Is that true?
The second point would be that we're not holding them hostage, what we're saying is, we don't want to lose the house. So, they simply have to come back to planning commission, explain where they are, so that we can assess all other options before the house is, is demolished, so they can continue their plan. And the motion I'm proposing is exactly what Scott has written in his conditions. We're not changing it, it's the conditions that Scott has put in the motion.
And I, if I, if you'll indulge me for a second, I think I do have, you know, something that could, that might help Commissioner Graffia out a little bit, because he makes a very good point. You know, what we didn't do in the, you know, in these circumstances, bring in legal to evaluate what the possibility was related to a requirement that doesn't allow them to move forward with the home based on preservation of a house that's not historic. I would think we would have to do that analysis, or we would bring back this, this, this application in the future, where we're going to amend the condition. So, we put the condition in place, if we're not able to bring this to fruition, because this seems to be the desire of all of the commissioners. How we do it, maybe a little less so, but, I mean, I think if we were to come back, because we couldn't meet the requirement here, we come back to the planning commission, I would have to do that analysis, because potentially, we're not coming back with a solution, we're coming back with, we don't have any place to put this.
Right.
And we have no, nothing to do, and the desire is then to demolish the house. I would have the state attorney's office weigh in on legal, you know, ramifications of, of this, of the planning commission not allowing that to happen. And I haven't had that analysis done to this point, because we had, you know, a solution moving forward. We have parties that are willing to work together, both parties want to preserve the house. I, we're, you know, we're certainly hopeful that's the case, but we have this condition to make sure we do a reset and have more, more discussion if we're not able to do that. And then as part of that, we'd have to have the legal analysis on, as to what the process is, and we could cer, we would certainly have to bring that forward. That would have been something I potentially would have done with this, if we were like, in a situation where planning commission wants to preserve, applicant wants to demolish, here we are, what, you know, what are the options? And I, and we probably would have had that, that work done here, but that's not the scenario we find ourselves in, we have everybody wanting to preserve it. So, that's, I don't know if that helps you out at all, Commissioner Graffia, but that's something we would certainly bring back, you know, because I guess would be a required analysis for us to do.
So, I am comfortable with moving forward on our approvals for this project with the, the new language. There was also a question, I believe, and I don't know if that's something that needs to be part of our discussion today, but that just changing the name of, the, changing the address, I feel like that was in the report somewhere?
Yeah, yes, it was, and it's a, it's a condition in the resolution.
Okay.
It, it's addressed as, just for those who may be, be not familiar with the, with the issue here. The property is addressed as 101 Fig Street, and, but it doesn't actually have access to Fig Street. So, for first responder and emergency response reasons, we would want the property to have an Embarcadero address. We wouldn't address it as 683 Embarcadero, just because the numbering is different now. And then I would add here that Commissioner Graffia wanted a video to be shown, and I.
Me, Rodriguez?
Yes, that Commissioner.
And, and I just want to clarify something here. The reason, I've seen that place forever. You know, as long as I come to Morro Bay, I've seen this home. Today, I went there at 4:30 and examined it for forty-five minutes. I took a great video of exactly what I was talking about at the very beginning, where you guys just got tangled up, you and Bill. I brought that up at the very beginning about the variance. We're going to give something right now, and you know what? We could, it may be significant, it may not be, but I always thought it was going to be an issue. So, I got a great video that shows us that, how we could run into problems later because of that, the bluff there. And that was the first question I asked, right, is, we're going to do this. Now, I noticed when I was out there for forty-five minutes, there's one to the left, one to the right. What is that going to give somebody else, potentially? Right? I brought that, that was my very first question, and then Susan and Bill disagreed on the significance of that.
But I do think it was answered.
Well, but, but I don't know if we've got the right answer, because there's disagreement as to what people feel about that. Well, Bill, and.
I don't, I don't think there's any disagreement on the issue of whether other homeowners could get.
A variance.
A variance to have primary access to the Embarcadero.
On the, off the bluff.
They all have a secondary access.
And then the nineteen eighty agreement that the residents spoke of, I, I've reviewed that agreement. That, that was an agreement that, where the city agreed that those property owners there at the base of the bluff could put up a fence, they could put up no parking signs, they, they all had access. The current property currently takes ass, oh, sorry, the current 101 Fig Street, they have access there, because there's a driveway there. So, they have access. What's different about this property and why, why the commission can make findings for a variance is that there are special circumstances with this property, because it's the only property in this area that doesn't have access to Main Street, and the property is too small to meet the bluff development standards. It is just physically impossible to build a home at the top of the bluff, set twenty feet back from the bluff, because of the, of the size of the property. And, and so, given that they're proposing to basically put right where it was, it was, it was the least obtrusive way of accommodating the development on the site. Their original application showed a larger home, we said shrink the size of the home. What you see before you tonight is, is the smaller home, but while still accommodating the use.
Okay.
And I, and, and Commissioner Rodriguez, you had come to me and you had asked to share a video, I don't know that I can, I don't think I have a way to get it onto that computer.
That's okay, because if, I'm sure everybody did what I did, got, went down there, they understand that fence, they see the bluff, they see this one here, they see one to the left, one to the right, they understand that. Because that was my first concern, is that we're going to set us a precedent. That board's come up, we're going to set a precedent, that was my major concern.
And the, and these other, these other properties, they, they would be required to comply with, with other, the, the standards, so that's a lot, it's deeper. They have other opportunities for citing a property. I mean, this property, literally, they could only cite the home on the face of the bluff. Our, our original thought was, is, how can you do that when, you know, we have bluff face standards? And that's why we had consulted with Coastal Commission on this.
Okay, because I was ready to make a, a motion too, I know Bill wanted to make a motion, so I, I'm ready to make a motion, but.
One more comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. Just going back to the verbiage on this condition, I'm wondering if we could get rid of, "The applicant shall work with the Historical Society of Morro Bay," because I don't know if it really matters, but it might open up to more than, or to the ability to preserve the house without having to go through the Historical Society. I know that they want to work together, and that's a priority, but I'm wondering if it also limits what their outcomes could be with moving the house.
Could you say something like, work with the Historical Society or another interested preservation agent, or?
I guess my point being, like, if they want to move it to a ranch, that's still preserving the house, even if it's not exactly where, maybe the Historical Society or.
You know what I was going to suggest, is, "The applicant shall work with the Historical Society of Morro Bay" or other interested parties in preserving the property, the red house, right? With them, or other, like, somebody who has a ranch wants to put it on their ranch. In other words, other interested parties who would like to preserve the Little Red House. Does that sound about right? Since you're talking Asia, I mean, something like that, or other interested party, we want to preserve the house.
Yeah.
So, we should, they're working on preserving the house. Yeah.
Mike, this is Bill. I, I think we want to preserve the house, but the point is that it's, it's precious to Morro Bay and Morro Bay history. My sense, as a preservationist and who's worked on a lot of preservation projects, is this, this house could eventually be, if it was unmoved, on the National Registry. If we had the app, you know, if we did that. And because we don't have a local ordinance, that makes it difficult to do it locally. But I think the story is fantastic. And the day that we move the house, we should have, we should call it Nadine Richards, Richards Day, and have a parade as the house moves down to the, you know, the Maritime Museum. That's how significant it is. I think that the responsibility of the planning commission is to do everything we can to encourage that to happen. If the applicant comes back and gives us great reasons why it couldn't, then I'm happy to hear it again and reconsider. But what we're trying to put in by condition is a responsible effort to save the house, keep it in Morro Bay, and keep it accessible to the public. The preservation of this house on a winery, I don't think does it for me. So, I guess I'm hoping in every way to sort of move it in that direction, and then reconsider if we can't find a home for it, but not now. Not give that out. That would be, the motion I would like to make is simply, you know, the language that staff has said with the, with the added verbiage that they just discussed this with the local preservation society.
Okay, I have one more comment from Joe.
You know, I, I find myself in the, in the odd position of not advocating for the preservation of this historical asset. I find that a strange position to be in, but, but I find the, the converse logic so persuasive. If the applicant had come to us with a plan to demolish the house and build the house that he has an application for, I believe this body would be hard-pressed to say no to that, because of the, of the advantages of, of essentially saving the bluff, preserving the tree. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm left with the conclusion that, you know, no good deed goes never unpunished. You know, he, he's within his rights to destroy the building, he's trying to save it, and we're attaching these fairly onerous obligations on his part in the future to somehow ensure that this building is preserved, even though he doesn't have an obligation to preserve that building. And, and while I, I can appreciate that he's asking for an exception, there are numerous reasons to grant that exception other than the preservation of this house. That's all I have to say about it.
Well-stated, I, you know, I, if, if nothing else, I think this is a huge appeal to our community to open up your checkbooks. And let's, you know, we do have some people on our board who are very experienced in, in doing fundraising, and it sounds like Commissioner Roshan has a lot of experience with this kind of historic preservation as well, and perhaps has some, some fundraising abilities. You know, I, again, I agree with Joe that this, this offer and need and desire of the applicant and owner to preserve this little house is admirable. You know, I, I think our Historical Society even had a whole meeting on the Little Red House, and it was fascinating. The history of it and, and more about Nadine Richards. And there were a lot of people in the community who were, who were participated and very connected to that. So, I have faith in the goodwill efforts of both the applicant and the Historic Society to do the best they can to get this done. I think these conditions that were added by staff, hopefully, are not too onerous. And, and hopefully, there has been some work done by the Historical Society, again, on the citing. Some of the members have met with staff and with some folks who are, who have been surveying for us and, and getting estimates on moving costs and so on. So, I'd like to see it go forward.
Yeah.
Get this process going, so the applicant can start getting his permits in and so on.
So, some final clarifications, Susan, so for Mr. Stephenson, so if we drop the last sentence, is that okay? If we just drop that last sentence?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, good. Just want to clarify, so we'll just drop the last.
Wait, wait, drop. Drop what sentence?
The last sentence on the bullet there, it says, "The applicant shall work with the Historical Society of Morro Bay on the relocation plan for the Little Red House," because prior to that, we already had the fact that they're working to relocate.
We just dropped the requirement for the local preservation group.
You might not be reading.
But the staff language still stays, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, but on the, the thing I'm looking at, Bill, we're going to drop the last sentence on the thing I'm looking at. I don't know if you're looking at it, but it would. on the thing I'm looking at. I don't know if you're looking at it, but it would, basically the applicant's already working to relocate the little red house. So we're not going to require them to work with the Historical Society to make it happen. And because, right? Is that about right?
Necessarily. Because they are working-
Yeah, because we're going to drop, so if we drop that sentence, everything's fine.
For whatever reason, Mike, you're coming across really garbled. Scott, could you tell me where, my motion would be to approve it with staff's language as stated in the staff report. Is that what we're saying, Scott?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Not without the, the language, without the sentence that we added here this evening?
Yes. Okay. So that's my motion.
Okay. So Commissioner Roshan said that's his motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody want to give a second? Mike? Give, you want to be the second on-
I think, I think I want to give a, but that's not all we're doing though. Cause I was looking at the whole, you know, application. Cause I was going to make a motion to approve coastal development, condition use permit, and then a variance request for the project with the additional language that we had in here. That's what I was going to motion. But see, me and Roshan are on the same page. So I'm not going to second something on it. You know, I'm looking at our report. It says staff recommends the planning commission approve coastal development planned, you know, permit here, conditional use permit, which I'm going to do, and a variance request, Bill, for this project with the attached condition number 12, right?
Right.
That's what I'm doing.
Right.
I made that motion. I don't understand what Bill's-
Okay. I think Bill made the same motion. So his is on the floor first.
Okay. I'll second it then. As long as I-
There we go.
We said the same thing, but different ways.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Should we have a roll call vote?
Okay. Commissioner Roshan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
No.
Commissioner Stewart, Chairperson Stewart?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes 4-1.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. We have nothing under new business and nothing under unfinished business. Or I know, I know-
Yes, we do.
Mr. Rodriguez has unfinished business.
We, we have to finish our report on the public benefits or public-
Is that something we can agendize at this point?
Yeah. Well, Joe was on vacation and when he came back, he was going to evaluate the input we got from the various other boards or commissions or chairs of those commissions to make a motion to bring the final draft of our public benefits, you know, proposal to the planning commission.
Well, you, you guys just need to tell me when you're ready and-
Yeah.
I'll put it on the agenda.
Well, I, I have to think that it's, it's been with the other boards long enough for them to have evaluated it. I don't, as I'm sitting here, I don't know whether they've had time formally to meet and discuss it.
I, I believe, I believe everybody that was going to did, my understanding, HAB and Public Works Advisory Board, sorry, and Public Works Advisory Board, I think both met and discussed it.
I seem to recall that, I may be wrong about this, but at the meeting at which I thought they were going to discuss it and I was going to recuse myself, I think that meeting was canceled. But I'm not positive. And I have a meeting of that board tomorrow. I could ask.
There you go. It's convenient for you to be on both boards so you can get that information. That's good.
That would prevent us from deciding at this point to agenda for the next-
I, I do know they were teeing it up because I had talked to Janine Burlingame who was preparing that piece of the agenda. It was like a one-page staff report to give you the opportunity to speak to it, or to give the group the opportunity to speak to it. So if that was the meeting that got canceled, then, then perhaps I didn't-
Well, could we, could we put it on the agenda and then if I find out that it, they haven't had adequate time, we can take some, take some action to, to remove it from our agenda?
Our, yeah, our next, we're actually not going to have the meeting on the 6th. So our next one, our next meeting is going to be on the 20th. So we could, yeah, I mean, I could certainly pencil it in for that right now. And I'll do that when, you know, I get back in the office tomorrow and-
The 20th of December, Scott?
Correct.
So that's our last meeting of the year?
Yes.
So we're not going to, you know, I'm just expect-
Better late than never.
But what I'm saying is, you know, most likely, we're probably going to hopefully-
We'll have eggnog.
Yeah. And bring our memo back for review and approval from the planning commission, right? Cause the memo we brought five or six months ago. That was supposed to take 30 days, Mr. Roshan?
One can hope.
Good. Nice job.
So, so that unfinished business is going on to a future agenda item.
Yes.
So there we go.
Yeah. Yeah. And right now, we're, we're shooting for the 20th.
Other items, wondered in response to Mr. Green's comments earlier, whether we want to, at some point have any discussion about, or will we have a discussion about what's happening at the Maritime Museum site and the potential site for the little red house?
Right now, those have been issued, you know, they're on city property. They've been issued through minor use permits because their principally permitted uses is in the location.
Okay.
And we work through MOU currently. The Maritime Museum operates under an MOU over there, I believe. That's the agreement or license. I think it's a license agreement, actually. And with this next iteration of their plan, they'd be required to enter into a lease with the city, an actual real lease instead of the, the other agreement. And that would probably be something similar that we would do with the Historical Society if they were able to, you know, effectuate the moving of the little red house. So those are, those have been, you know, things that have been reviewed and through the lease process and directed by city council to this point and approved at staff level. Sean indicated some desire to potentially appeal the, the staff action. And we'll see if he decides to do that. We're going to meet with him tomorrow, actually, and talk through a little bit of that with him.
Okay.
So we'll see.
All right. Thank you for that. And then I know we can't put it on the agenda, but I, I would hope that especially after this meeting, the whole concept of a, of an historic preservation ordinance being moved forward, we will be having a, a new council in the new year. And, and maybe that is something we can again, put forward as a priority or concern that we have if we still have it. But I would imagine we'll have future goal setting meetings coming in the new year.
As you're probably, most of you are aware, we're going to have some new council members, including likely a new mayor. And so we're going to be going into a goal setting process for the, for the next, I think, two years. That'll start right after the first of the year. I think we're probably going to do some survey stuff and then we'll do some engagement. I think there'll be some engagement with the advisory bodies to get their desire on what should be included in the, in the, in the, in the goal setting process. And then the council will take that all up. And certainly that's something that, say, the Historical Society could come to those meetings as they'll be public and, you know, also lobby for as well. So, yeah, I mean, certainly the work was done now a few years ago. And I have, I mean, I have, I have the copy of the ordinance. So if that's the desire of council to, to move that forward, you know, in the next goal setting process, then that's something we'll be able to work on with the planning commission. So.
Since we're on that topic, can I ask you a question, Scott? You would know. So when I, when a city becomes a city, how long does it usually take for it to create a historical district or society? I heard 75 years.
It's, you know, it's, I mean, so the city has been around for a long time. It didn't just spring here. It's been here for quite a while. It just wasn't incorporated.
Yeah.
It, it really is kind of up to the desire of the community, you know? If there's enough momentum behind it, then, you know, you're electing people that, you know, that are doing things that you want. And then that becomes a thing. And they, they direct staff to work on the, on the ordinance and it, and it, and it happens. It's no different than the zoning code update that we're taking for second reading next week to the city council. It's like that, you know? We get the direction to do it, we go work on it and bring it forward. Take it through our process, which would be planning commission and then city council. And then that probably wouldn't be something that would reside in the IP. So it wouldn't require coastal approval. It would just be, it would just reside with the city.
Would it be inappropriate for the planning commission to express an opinion that an historical preservation ordinance was, was needed?
Oh, I, I'm saying you're going to get that opportunity. I, at least I believe you will. Normally how the goal setting process works is we engage the advisory bodies and get their input for council consideration. Certainly the advisory bodies have been the ones that are, you know, doing the work in the trenches. And I think the council values that work and wants to hear from the different advisory bodies, you know? So I think that's, that's where you'll get the opportunity to do it there. And, and then certainly as, you know, Citizen Ingraffia can always, you know, weigh into the process as well.
Sure. It's interesting because there are several properties on Morro Bay Boulevard that just recently sold. And they are some of the older, more historic properties. No clue what the new owners may have in mind for them. I don't know if you have a clue, but-
I mean, so, yeah, I mean, they're, currently the idea is to use the, upgrade the buildings a little bit, you know, spruce them up a bit and reuse them.
Could use sprucing.
That's the desire now. There's not, there's not been any, you know, desire expressed to tear things down, that type of thing, which thankfully is the case.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
I mean, some of the buildings on Boulevard could go, but some of them really do have a presence and a history there. And so.
Yeah. And, and the reason I ask, Scott, because I think the sooner the better. And obviously you have a majority of this board, this commission that wants to see that happen. So I would agree with Susan and Joe that we be more proactive in making it happen.
And there's, and the good thing is we're now done with the general plan.
Yes.
We're just got done with zoning. So that creates staff capacity to do other things.
Could you send us, sorry, that draft ordinance?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Susan, this is Bill.
Yeah.
I wonder if I could make a, a kind of a recognition and thank you to our council member liaison, council member Jeff Heller?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
For the efforts he's done for us and a big thank you and just recognize him publicly. And he's been a huge, I think, help to us and has tried very, very hard to support the planning commission. And I think we would like to publicly thank him.
Yeah. And Bill, I would go further and say that if he can come to our December 20th meeting, that would be great for us to thank him in person and have a little thank you, farewell. Bill?
That would be great. We, we also have a, a meeting or a gathering for-
We do have an advisory body recognition event that's on December 6th at the Yacht Club. I believe, has Dana sent the information out to you?
Yeah, four times.
Four, four times. If you have been RSVP'd already.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay. I was pretty sure it went out.
I gotta get past Thanksgiving. My God.
We can bump elbows or shake hands or give him a hug. Cause he, he has been, he's, he's really been an active participant. I know he listens to all the meetings and he certainly has communicated with all of us before and after and really appreciate, I've sat down with him on numerous occasions and had conversations. And, and we'll miss his voice. So hopefully he stays, stays tuned in to things that are going on. I think he will.
And I wanted to point out the interesting nexus that exists between what Commissioner Roshan had proposed at the earlier meeting about the design district for the downtown area and a historical preservation ordinance.
Interesting. Interesting. Yeah.
So our esteemed community development director?
Oh, God.
Yeah. The, the only thing I, I had, I was going to add was the recognition event on the 6th. And then I guess the other thing would be that Vistra is holding the information session at the community center tomorrow at 5:30. I think it's 5:30 to 7:30. That's not a city event. That's entirely held by Vistra. They rented out the community center to have that event. And it's provided information related to their proposed battery project. So those that are interested in that, and there seems to be quite a few folks in the community that are, I, I do encourage you to attend. Hopefully I'll be able to go by there at least for a little while to see what they have set up, to check it out. But yeah, I do encourage folks that are interested in the battery project to, to attend that, that meeting.
Get some real information.
And you can't attend virtually, you know, it's only in person? Because I tried to do that last time and cause I wasn't in town. I may have to leave early tomorrow. So.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's their event. It's an in-person thing. They, they've indicated, you know, a desire to do other, you know, outreach efforts in the community. Maybe we have one, maybe they do one that's, that's recorded. We did express that, you know, that there's probably a, there's a desire in our community to have that ability to, to see what's presented and that type of thing. Although I think this event is more like stations. They're going to have, I think, I think they're going to have like a battery rack in there.
Which is actually very interesting to see. I, I will say from our tour of the site up in Moss Landing, looking at the way those things are put together and the built-in security features of them, the safety features, was really fascinating. I mean, to me, it looked like a baker's rack. Literally a baker's rack and it was filled with these little battery pack storage thing. I mean, some pretty crazy innovation there.
Definitely, you know, at least an opportunity for the community to-
Yeah.
-get some additional information on something that's certainly been of concern of-
Sure. Get some questions answered. There's, there's a lot to absorb in all of that. So, yeah.
True.
All right. Well, then I think we can adjourn this meeting. Again, we will not have our meeting on the 6th. The next meeting will be on December 20th. And have a good night, everybody.
I miss you all.
Happy Thanksgiving.